I have that.
Oh, nice. There we go.
Ready?
Alright, we'll call the meeting to order.
Pledge.
Roger.
Oh, it was your chair.
Hold on, you can move it.
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What did we gain today?
It's been there for a while.
The one that's usually.
Became part of the environment.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright. And do we need this or anything?
Um, well, we can't get solutions on that.
Yeah, so probably not.
Just get it out of the way for now.
Uh, let's see. Will, you have anything for public discussion?
Nope.
Okay, uh, since we don't have anyone for that, we'll move on to approving the agenda minutes and claims. Do you have a motion for that?
We'll move to approve the agenda and minutes dated February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, as well as the claims.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second it.
Um, I thought we had to do claims separate than the minutes.
Well, it's on the agenda altogether, so it doesn't matter.
Must have been.
It's okay, we can do it either way.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Who who did the second?
I did.
Okay, so.
I have to abstain.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Josh abstains, any any nays? Motion carries unanimous, four to zero. Alright, um, Phil just sent his notes to us since he's sick, so we can review them anytime later on. Now we're up to budget plan and review.
I think that's the one, um, that I need to look at to make sure that's where we put it.
I'll get this.
Sorry, get it.
You're good. This is already done. We'll get claims signed.
Yeah. So, uh, thank you, thank you for having me. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Do I just not sign this? Since I haven't signed it?
Yeah, yeah, you can just pass it up. Alright, that's done. And then we'll get claims, Jack's done with them. It's all one packet there, Roger.
It's all one?
Yep, it's all one. We should have drainage claims too, but they're not here. We'll have to get them later.
We got a whole bunch of drainage claims that we approved.
Another few. Alright.
Okay.
For budget, do you want to, anywhere you want to start?
Yeah, so I made my list of changes that you guys wanted to make that you decided Thursday last for vacation.
Yep.
So, I've been working on that yesterday after I got back from vacation. I was hoping to come over the weekend, but my mother-in-law has been very sick, so I wasn't able to come in over the weekend. But yesterday I did work on it, um, there's one list now. Okay, so the list that I made of things that I had to change was moving sheriff's office deputies, not the sheriff, but the first deputy, from general to rural, so we've done that. Um, moved secondary road health insurance from rural to general supplemental. Um, Doug and I were working on that a little bit yesterday, we have some questions on that, so I'd like him to come up so we can discuss some of that. Um, change insurance amount for all departments to reduce to ten percent instead of twenty, so we've done that. Except for some of the, um, bigger ones that have multiple employees that I have to figure how many think of. So there's only like three departments that are left to do on that. Um, cut emergency management by twenty-five percent, I've done that. Change libraries to only tech grant of eighty-five thousand, I've done that. Reduce attorney fees, line item and supervisor's account, done that, removes the parking lot expense, I've done that. Um, then just notes myself, make sure that, um, the wages that we changed, um, cause we changed when we first changed them to see what our numbers were, we changed into what it was last year, but I need to go back and make sure that there wasn't any new employees um, added that are at a lesser rate or any additions, so that I'm not missing anything. And then, um, then checking the Doug on the insurance rate. So right now, all we're waiting on is the health insurance, um, for secondary road and to finish up those amounts for the other departments. So if if you wouldn't mind calling Doug up here, we can
No.
tell you where we're at with that.
That'd be funny.
I did write on a note somewhere, I didn't know what this meant.
Good morning Doug, we're ready for you in the boardroom.
Do you remember what was it?
It was just gonna say that and all that.
Okay. Sometimes I write things down and I think, what did I mean by that?
That was a mental tally for us.
Okay, okay.
For hitting our target of what we needed.
Okay, so is there anything else you guys said to move or do that I didn't just list? That you guys had written down or that you guys can think about?
I think so, thank you for covering it.
Thank you, got them.
So then um we can shut the projector off, it's not blind, I can't pull up. I can't pull up solutions on the projector with owl on, so I'll just have to tell you instead of showing you.
Yep.
Kyle can see my screen.
Is that the only change you made on that discretionary spend, just the libraries?
Just the libraries, yes, I and but the new one, um, what was it called that came in and asked?
Healthy Harvest.
Healthy Harvest has not been, I don't believe, I'll have to double check that, um.
That wasn't added at the time?
Let me look, it might have been now that I'm thinking about it, I might have gotten that done right away that day, so let me check on that.
I will take that out.
Good morning.
Let me look quick and see if I've taken that one out. Cause that would have been. Thanks for coming up Doug.
Sure.
Um.
That was vacation.
Good.
Good.
And so what, do we remember what the amount of that was?
It's like two.
Just over two thousand.
Two thousand some.
Was it like twenty-one seventy-five?
I think it is, yeah.
Okay, I think that that is two, so that is in there, so do you want me to remove that?
We can tell them we can revisit it next year.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, let me. Let me go get my book before I remove it, um, sorry Doug. I asked you to come up, um, to talk about where we are with health insurance as far as, um, how to figure those amounts and secondly, secondary road health insurance, the board had asked me to move that from rural to general.
Okay.
And I know we talked about that yesterday, and so we gotta figure out how to do that and if we want to do that. I wanna go over with the board where the fund balances are right now, but first I wanna grab my book to make sure I'm not removing something I should.
Sure.
This is the drain that had moved on Tyler.
Yeah.
I'm bored.
Yeah.
With the joint conference.
Yep, yep.
Okay, that has been removed. Alright, so when we look at fund balances where we are right now, and this is before moving secondary road. But after moving deputies and before um, with the ten percent decrease for individual departments, that is in there except for the few.
Yeah, yeah.
General supplemental balance is at two million dollars.
That's right where we were aiming for.
And rural is at two million dollars.
Without moving insurance?
And, uh, weren't we, uh, we're aiming for like three before, cause yeah, we're, yeah, we're at reestimated for twenty-four is three point four million, so we'd be dropping quite a bit.
Um, and then secondary road is, is of course low still at
For next year?
At thirty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars.
Right, yeah. So we can't spend all what's budgeted?
So I guess, um.
What's general supplemental coming to?
That's what I just, that was the first one I told you. Is the two of them?
That's, oh, okay.
I didn't know you had a basic.
What's general, what's general basic? I just think you are in general basic.
One point eight.
What we talked about.
Yeah, so s- can you go back to supplemental? Yeah, so that's where if we move the health insurance for that, that'll bring it back down, um, which we're at, looking at one point four, almost one point five right now, so if we bring health insurance over.
And Doug did a rough estimate yesterday and it's about a million, that was with the twenty percent, not the ten percent, so that's gonna drop it.
Yeah, we figured like nine hundred thousand-ish maybe.
But that's where you wanna end it, uh, is, you wanna be that low?
What was general basic gonna be, one point eight?
One point eight, one point eight.
Yeah, um, we may- maybe don't have to move all of it, cause like the one um, under bridges and culverts total, uh, the health insurance there would be six twenty-five. If we move that, you would have you'd be just under where we're currently looking to be sitting. One point four-ish.
But does, then does that get complicated? I I sent a message to Carrie Johnson just, um, to see if we could do some of the things, and she sent me a response that said, it is unlawful to make permanent transfers of money between the general fund and the rural services fund.
That would be a transfer of money between accounts. Change where your expenditures come from.
Except for the fact, Doug, please correct me if I'm wrong, that Doug's funds come from rural, we do transfers to secondary road. Correct? So.
Some funding.
Yeah, so how, we won't be able to pay. You're not gonna be able to do a transfer from rural to general supplemental for that insurance, correct?
I don't know what, I don't know what the purpose, what the, what the theory is of what you guys are proposing, I guess, I'm sorry. I mean, are you talking about paying for the health insurance of all secondary road employees? Health insurance and dental insurance out of a different fund, right now it's being paid out of secondary roads. So I don't know what, if there's a change, I haven't been made aware of this change.
Problem that I might come in because the insurance is paid for partly by gas tax money.
That is correct, the secondary road fund is made up of.
If you're changing it to supplemental, general supplemental, you're changing your basic way of your funding insurance, is that legal?
That's what I think she means by it's unlawful to make permanent transfers of money between the general fund and the rural services.
It, it wouldn't be a transfer between the fund, it would be paying it out of that fund instead of paying it out of.
But what I'm saying is in order to get money from rural to secondary road, we have operating transfers.
Yeah.
And that's how we'd get the money to Doug's account, so that would be a tran- we'd have to transfer it then to general supplemental, right? Am I doing, thinking this wrong?
I, I don't know what, what the plan is.
It would be. From supplemental.
I know right now that it's being done, but I don't know what the plan is.
I think the plan was in order to relieve the tax side of the rural because we're moving deputies over to rural, something need to be taken out of rural then, and that's what was put on supplemental for general, so that everyone was then contributing to that tax.
Yep, basically.
Was was the idea, uh, that the board had discussed from what I understood.
Yeah.
But I don't know if I speak.
Well, and that's.
I mean, are are you talking about the question I ca- I mean, are you talking about the road department to continue to pay for for health insurance, it's just the the contribution somehow the road department has to contribute to general supplemental?
No, the road department wouldn't contribute to supplemental, it's the other way around. General, the general supplemental levy, those dollars would contribute to health insurance or secondary roads.
Okay.
Like, like we currently pay insurance for, like liability insurance for vehicles and all that, and you count that in your local effort, that's other funds. It would be that same type of structure, it would be paid by general supplemental.
So you're not talking about increasing or taking part of the operating transfers, because we have a budget amount for that, you're not talking about transfer, okay?
Completely separate.
Then, then, okay.
Because, because of the code section with supplemental insurance, in particular health insurance in this conversation, is an eligible expense on the supplemental levy.
Okay, so then are you talking about changing the amount of his operating transfers then, since it's not, that, since the levy's gonna be picking up that, or are you keeping that the same?
We would probably have to change the, the transfers for rural property taxes to offset that, because we'd be bringing deputies in.
When will that decision be made?
Well, it's gonna have to be made today, because
That's, that's what we talked about.
We have to have it when, the Department of Management is asked to.
So what, what are you gaining?
Gaining the flexibility to pay, to pay for the same expenses.
Fund balance and general basic.
Otherwise, we could just be making major cuts, that's the other option.
But just he's saying it's legal to have the deputies go into rural basic.
Yep.
But then the insurance would come out of general rural.
Sup- general supplemental.
And go into general supplemental.
Correct, yep.
But my question is, is that legal because the insurance is being paid by road tax money now? So you're changing the way that you're funding a benefit, is that legal?
The, the code section for supplemental is very.
Yep, it says it, but we're changing now how we're doing something.
I think we have to be very, very, very careful when we're mixing rural and general funds. And that's what's concerning to me, is making sure that we aren't doing any, that you're not making any decisions that are illegal. And I think that's Doug's concern too, is making sure that we're not
Is.
messing with something that's set out for a reason.
Well, we can.
Did Elizabeth say it was?
I didn't ask Elizabeth, cause they're so swamped, so that's why I sent it to Carrie Johnson at Department of Management.
And what did he say, I didn't?
Carrie said three thirty-one point four thirty-two interfund transfers says, it is unlawful to make permanent transfers of money between the general fund and the rural services fund.
What, what did you ask her in your email?
I said uh, one of our supervisors would like to take all of the secondary road employees' health insurance out of general supplemental instead of secondary road. We currently transfer funds from rural services to secondary road to pay for this, are we allowed to transfer from rural services to general supplemental?
So, I think she's answering a different question than what I'm talking about, because it's not a transfer for rural to general supplemental.
Right, right now that you said you don't wanna transfer that, I get that, but the other thing is though i- is Roger correct Doug that, um, road taxes is what's paying for the health insurance for secondary road?
The road fund, the revenue for road fund is made up of some general basic taxes, some rural basic taxes, some road use taxes.
And local option sales.
And local option sales.
So it's a combination.
And other miscellaneous.
It's, it's all, it's all in one pot.
Okay.
So I don't I mean right now, the road use tax would contribute to the secondary road fund, which is what pays for those expenses, yes, so it could be a portion of that. It's not, it's not necessarily like earmarked dollars, it's not specific that way, but.
But I'm, I'm not sure that it's legal to do what we're doing, is what my point is.
Better make sure.
Cause we're changing, we're changing how we're funding something that we, was funded partially by road tax dollars.
We could try to call Carrie.
Which is the majority of your.
Yeah, that, that would probably be a good idea. Yeah, oh, yeah, right now it's more.
Yeah.
Cause I, I think, I think the question she answered was.
Was my question about transfers, yes.
Yeah, was, was different than what my intent was, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you transfer.
It's, no, no, no.
Okay.
I, I fully agree with her answer, but I think she answered a question that was not applicable to the situation.
I, and, and I, my thought was that's what you were wanting to do was to to supplement that way.
Because like, it's going, yeah.
I do, I don't have a problem with it, but I just wanna make sure that it's the right thing. EMS is.
Hello?
Thank you for calling the Department of Management, you've reached voicemail of Carrie Johnson. You can either wait for my desk or on another line. If you would like to return calls, please leave your name, number, and a detailed message, and I'll return your call as soon as possible. You may also reach me via email at Carrie, C-A-R-R-I-E dot Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N at iOS dot gov, thank you.
At the tone, please record your message. When you have finished recording, simply hang up or press pound for further options.
Good morning Carrie, this is Tammy from the Cassis County Auditor's Office. I am in the boardroom this morning talking with the supervisors, um, kind of about what I talked to you about via email. Um, the question though is a little bit different, the board isn't, um, wanting to transfer funds, they're just wanting to see if it's possible to pay for secondary uh, road employees' health insurance out of general supplemental instead of rural, so we just need some clarification on that. If you could please give us a call back, I would appreciate it. Our number here is five one five two nine five two seven one eight, thanks Carrie, bye-bye.
Okay, perfect.
And then, um, do you wanna try to call Elizabeth and see if she answers?
Maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't hurt, yeah.
Okay. Do you, I don't have her cell phone number Kyle, do you think that's a better way to reach her?
Yeah, I. Probably.
And I, while you're doing that, I'm gonna tell the girls that have Carrie calls to send her through to us.
The cell phone number there.
Okay, I'll wait for Tammy to come back.
Yeah. Yeah, alright, yeah.
EMS isn't bothering you?
No, that was when Phil called earlier, he's sick.
Phil's, yeah.
He's sick. So that's why he, he emailed his notes.
He was sick last week, wasn't he?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. He's, he's been sick a long time?
He's he's sick.
Going on now? Is it?
My wife.
He hasn't been gone the whole time, he's been here.
Yeah. My wife's been off and on sick for two months, so it's just, seems like a lot of people it's hanging on.
Me and his marriage.
It's, could be true.
Her house hasn't gotten it. Knock on wood.
Our dog was sick last night at twelve thirty this time.
Eat some of the ones I'm supposed to.
I have it at like even going. I want out, you want out from the bar, can you get back in now?
Okay.
That's nice of you. Mine just doesn't read on the living room floor.
Carter was gonna wait till you got back to call, you're okay.
If you wake up and hear it. She's smart to have it on silent.
I know she's short-staffed, um, and they've been really busy, so.
This is the busiest staff here. Ten thousand questions and no answer.
You reached Elizabeth fire, I can't keep it going right now.
So, um, Doug, you've been doing this longer than any of us. Any insight that you have or direction would, I would really appreciate. So anything that you can explain to help me understand and for the board to make a good decision, I would really appreciate.
My understanding is I, I believe other counties do pay for health insurance from funds other than secondary roads.
Okay.
Where that is exactly, I'm not sure.
So, and, and you can add on or correct any of this, but what I would compare it to is like our property insurance that we pay for out of previously, it had been out of general basic, we moved that to general supplemental because it was insurance. But it's, it's contributing funds from another source, but it's still paying for, um, everything, it just moves locations, so to move deputies in, we would have to off, and into rural we'd have to offset that expense, so yes, you would reduce transfers into secondary road department for the rural taxes. But then you would move that expense out, so it would be a wash on the total picture, and it would still be paid for. It would still be a local contribution, so it, it shouldn't negatively impact your budget at all. Is, are you following what I'm saying there Doug? Little bit?
The transfer amount would be lower, but you're not paying.
I mean, I, I don't understand.
Yeah.
Again, I mean, it, it, uh, you're just shifting burden from one to the other.
That's, that's correct, because we're maxed on the general basics, so we have to move out of general basic and like those are the pieces that have flexibility, I guess, that's the only way I could say it simply, um.
Your problems are gonna come in and explaining it to people why you're paying all the deputies out of rural basic, they're gonna have.
Well, they, they wouldn't be paying health insurance for secondary road out of it, it's, it's a wash.
I know, but they're not gonna look at it that way. They're gonna look at it as sleight of hand. I'm gonna have a hard time. I'm gonna have a hard time explaining why it's right.
Well. It's.
Well, we had a hard time explaining why we moved two deputies into rural. Basic, now you're moving all of them into general ba- rural basic. Why? And you're gonna, you're gonna say because we pulled insurance out and it's not making any difference. And they're gonna say, why didn't you do that before? Why were we paying their insurance if we could have been paying it out of general supplemental before? You're, you're gonna hear all those questions. Be prepared to have an answer that makes sense.
The amount is gonna be about the same, I'm guessing, because it was right about eight hundred thousand for deputies. I'm guessing it's gonna be about that. Cause right now it's a million and that's at twenty percent, so.
Yeah, I mean.
The amount's gonna be the same, so I, I mean, I don't, like Doug said, why?
The purpose is to pull it off of general sup- off of general basics, so that's the why is general basic is limited. We were gonna be down to two hundred thousand in fund balance before we made changes, so that's just one of the changes to. Help general basic. And.
There was a solution to general basics fund balance is what it stems down to.
It really ha- it's, it's not an issue with rural or the secondary road department. It's, those are the pieces of the puzzle that line up to make the whole picture work.
I forgot it was out of general basic for some reason. I was thinking it was out of.
And we could move deputies to general supplemental.
Yeah, w- well, and that's, that's the long-term solution that. Henry is working on for code section changes to allow.
Right.
Um, the sheriff's office, everything to be on general supplemental, so. Ideally, next year, we could move it back and straighten it out and it'd be simple, but. For, for this year, these are the only pieces we have at play to work with, or we start major cuts today. I mean, that's, that's our options on the table.
Now I'm back on the same page. Needed a refresher.
Yep, and that's, I mean.
Seven, seven, eighteen.
It's, yeah, it's because of our limits.
You're gonna be a little bit upset with people because we're moving, you know, you're defeating the purpose of their bill on seven eighteen.
Well, their, their purpose on Back to Blue is part of the reason that we have to do it, so. I mean, you can't have it both ways.
Well, we're doing it both ways.
They can't have it both ways is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And that is with the levy amount for general supplemental at two and a quarter.
Yeah, right. So I guess. My thought process on it, my knowledge behind it, it shouldn't, shouldn't be a negative to the secondary road department in any way. And it should help our fund balances be where they need to be to be sustainable.
Which was the result of our conversation last week.
Yeah.
Two weeks ago or whenever that was.
Yeah.
So. Today, it's a go that way.
Unless, I mean, and we can, we can just.
He hear back.
We can just.
Different, why don't you, why don't you make up your mind so that we can get going?
I mean, we don't have any other information. The, the question Tammy asked is a different function. And I agree with that answer, but that's not what we would be doing.
Yeah, and as long as that's not what we're doing, I, you know.
Yeah.
Doug and I were talking, brought up lots of questions.
Leave it as is until we would hear back from Carrie if.
Or.
If she, if she gets back and says, no, 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 you, this is enough.
I don't, I don't think there's any issues with. Doing it that way, it would pay it out of a different fund instead of transferring. Though, the transfer would be the issue.
And, and that's what we were looking at last night was what did transfers change and that's why I asked the question we did, so. Um, but now that I know that's not your intention, then, but I still would like to double check with them and make sure that we're not doing anything we shouldn't be doing.
Okay.
I don't remember ever doing anything like that before.
But it'd be, it'd be the same, same concept as moving deputies to rural before to. To shift between the funds, it's just an extra layer to it.
We justify it. Shifting to deputies because that's. We thought to all of them, yeah, that's different.
Well, I mean. There's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, but I can't really justify um, putting all of our deputies on rural. Basic without. Shifting something back to general basic in its place because. You have law enforcement that's being provided to all of our cities in the county that don't have their own police department for two thousand dollars a year. So, the. The citizens of those communities and the property owners of those communities are not paying very much for law enforcement. If, well, they're not paying anything for those deputies if they're on rural, so. The intent of moving that around is to. Still try and line up the cost for the services with where they should be, but. Moving a couple chess pieces to get it there.
Let me go back to what. The rural small incorporated towns. Give to general basic even isn't enough to support. Much.
Well, it's not, so.
So actually, there should be something done in the tax structure at the state because. They can't generate enough revenue to even operate, let alone pay for their services that should be paid.
Yeah, and. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of pieces to that conversation, but.
But I mean, if you're gonna lobby your legislators. Lobby your legislators, do something about how you're funding the small incorporated towns that's, they're not living with enough dollars to even make it.
Yeah.
They're not contributing to the general. Of the county.
I mean, we, we don't pay for much of anything in our sheriff's office budget for two thousand dollars. I mean, it just. It, it's the, it's the fact of life, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Why not raise the rates then that the, I mean, I'm just gonna play devil's advocate, okay? I live in Algonah, I own property in Algonah.
Right.
All of a sudden, my general supplemental. Levy is going up, which means I gotta pay more in property taxes. Why? Because. They're lowering the. Rural dollars that are going to the secondary road department. And putting it into the. General supplemental.
Because we're taking.
So why, why should I have to pay for that? I have never done it in the past.
Because we're, because we're taking away the expense of deputies off of general basic. Which you had paid for.
Um, but it's maxed out at three and a half. And contributing, now you can charity, you. Your hundred sixty acre farm that's in rural. Is gonna be paying less towards secondary roads than what I as a landowner in. The city of Algonah is gonna be paying for. It's gonna go down, how's it not?
Cause the, the rural landowners are still paying for general basic too. They pay for the majority of general.
General basic.
And general supplemental is the same people, it's just supplemental levy.
Well, we'll see what that example looks like. I, I have a feeling that's not gonna take, that's not gonna do.
I mean, I in the city of Laverne pay for general supplemental too.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
But the, but even to Roger's point, the small towns in our county and even Algonah. Don't pay a large portion of general basic or general supplemental. They levy the same people, the rural pays the majority of both. But they pay all of rural.
That's where your value is at.
Yep, it is. It's the simple fact of the matter.
But going to the roads, general dollars are limited. And going to the roads, rural, again, I'm talking about what's going to rule the roads. I'm not talking about everything.
The whole point of moving that is because supplemental is not limited.
I'm just playing devil's advocate.
There's two.
Generally, the way you can look at it is the money is still going to the rural for the roads and everything. The only thing that's changing is the.
Who's paying insurance? No, who's paying for it?
Yeah.
The money is, yeah, going to the roads, but who's paying for it? That's what's. Right now you've got this person, then you're gonna shift it to the general supplement?
The percentages.
Rural services, point four nine percent, that would be. City of Algonah, general basic is nine point seven two last year and general supplemental was four point two.
Yeah, so it's a fraction.
Right, and the city of Algonah gets forty six point eighty eight.
It's a small fraction, sorry.
That's, that's fine. I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Where. The rural. Sixteen point nine six for general basic. General supplemental, six point nine eight, so you add the two together seventeen and seven. Twenty-four percent of the rural taxes go to them. And then rural services of eight point four eight on top of that.
Yep.
If we could get rid of the school, fifty one point five five in the area of college, we'd have a really good.
I guess at, at the end of the day, yes, it's moving things around, but um. The, the increases. Is more directed back to where it would have been if we wouldn't have been limited.
I, I think we can rationalize it or justify it in whatever which way, but the fact is we're trying to fix the fund balance in, in general basic.
Correct.
And, and that's where we're at today, and I think we should just move forward with what we have unless they come back and say. That's a no-go.
Mm-hmm. So. Well, let's.
We gotta, we gotta keep.
Yeah.
You know, keep things rolling.
Let's just kinda move on from here and then if we hear anything back. While we're still in session, we can revisit it if that works.
Yeah, Doug, do you have any questions on what you need to do with your numbers or anything?
Yeah, no one's told me what's going on, yes, so it would be nice to have communication of. I mean, I, I've not been told to take any. Take money out, I've not been made of it, made aware of any adjustments to any revenue. I've, I've not been made of aware of any adjustments to expenses, so I need to have some direction.
Well, what we had talked about previously, which at this point is not changing, would be moving all expenses for. The line item for health insurance to being paid by general supplemental instead of. Secondary road fund, so that same dollar amount would come off as an expense. And for the secondary road fund. And we would have to offset that with a reduction in rural taxes. That way, the rural um, basic fund balance and everything stays where we intended it to. So those two numbers would offset, but it would still be.
What is that, I guess, I mean, tell me, tell me.
Exact dollar figures?
Yeah, I, you're re- you, you said to offset, uh, tell me how many dollars I'm gonna be getting from property taxes. That's what I need.
What?
You, you can't reduce rural taxes, then it's gonna be worse yet. You said you're gonna reduce rural taxes, that has, that, that, the taxes have to stay the same.
You would reduce the rural taxes going into the secondary road fund because that, those dollars are paying for deputies now.
The operating transfers.
Yeah, those transfers. But general supplemental would pay for those expenses, so the expense and income going into that budget would offset. So I'll write all the numbers here.
But those numbers are with twenty percent, not ten percent.
Correct, so that would have to be adjusted, so how about just the line items? Um.
So they're not very equal.
They would equal.
Well, they did a twenty percent, but a ten, you know.
It would just be a smaller number, but they would still need to offset. It would just be a smaller number, but you're right.
I think you had concerns about changing from twenty to ten too as well, correct?
Oh, I guess I, I do need to talk about insurance, cause I have no idea what. Is going on with insurance. I received an email, but I don't know what expenses are, so. If somebody could, that's a whole different topic.
Yeah, sorry, I just didn't want it to.
And then also, is this supposed to, the transfer station is. Employees' health insurance at the transfer station is supposed to be paid for out of general supplemental. Is, is, is the course of action to make every employee. Every Cassuth County employee that's receiving health insurance, that be out of general supplemental?
No. That was, that was to help the rural, um. Help general basic fund balance first, but then you have to offset it in rural to move to general supplemental, cause the. Um, transfer station is paid, is all separate with their tipping fees. Correct?
We receive twenty-five thousand dollars of.
Yeah.
Rural money.
Yeah, that, that doesn't need to move, it doesn't affect the rural fund balance.
It does, by twenty-five thousand.
But it was already planned, it's, it's never changed.
You can't say it doesn't affect the fund.
We could, I mean.
It doesn't change anything.
The health insurance doesn't affect the rural fund balance. The twenty-five thousand does, but that's not for health insurance. So, which plan did we go with?
I could tell you the.
We went.
That's what you're looking for, for.
No, I was going to, I was just gonna go to the health insurance topic for.
You wanna know what it is per year per employee or you're looking for what?
No, there, there's sheet for what our expenditures would be. Cause we kinda combined a couple plans. We went to seventy-five thousand dollar stop loss and. One thousand dollar deductible for single and two thousand dollar deductible for family. So with out-of-pocket max at fifteen and three.
Do we have an explanation or a, do we have a summary of that particular plan?
She was going to send that to us, cause it was a.
We have that.
It was a combination of two, of other quotes that she had done. We had. We had the quote for, um. Did you have something Roger? Jack? Okay, um. I don't remember which sheet it was, but it, we had used the stop loss figure from one of our other quotes and then. The. Um, I think fifteen hundred, yeah, here, it was. She did the math while she was sitting here, but we used. The fourth, um. Fourth column on the original one we got, which was, uh.
The yellow disc color.
Uh, the stripes, the first, first comparison we got, cause that had a thousand and two thousand for deductible and fifteen and three. For out-of-pocket max, and then she took the stop loss amount. At that a thousand eighty-one point three two and changed that to. Five, where is it? Stop loss was. Five twenty-four. five twenty-four point three nine per month. And then she did the math to come up with our total um.
Three point four eight five.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I.
What was that total?
Three million four hundred eighty-five thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars is what she quoted us.
For our total annual cost.
Three, three, four, eight, five, six, eight, two.
Oh, I got eight, six, two. I inverted.
Oh, close, close enough.
One of us had.
One of us said it right, one of us did it wrong. So approximately three and a half million dollars of expenditures?
Approximately.
Yeah, totally.
That was just moving the stop loss from forty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand for that particular plan.
Yeah, yeah, actually, yeah, I was.
And what did you um contribution?
Instead of the twenty percent increase we had talked about before, we went to a ten percent increase.
And what does that, what does that do for total contribution there?
You forgot to add in that Nick is going to put in an extra four hundred and some thousand in interest.
Yeah, we're gonna have some extra interest, but.
Got extra interest that will go into the insurance fund.
Tammy said the other day that some of that or from what Nick looked like, it mostly all went into general basic.
It goes into general basic.
I thought when he said one in insurance.
He thought and we probably need to verify some of that and talk.
What is what is the total contribution?
What are we at? You have the numbers that we're at currently.
Cause he shows interest in.
Yeah, I know.
He shows interest in coming on his sheets.
I know, I so I don't.
We do have some, we have.
He's got, he's got money.
There's, yeah, there's months. There's gotta, there's gotta be interest going.
He was talking about the interest on every kind of insurance funds.
Here.
Maybe that's just the interest, extra interest that he found on.
So are this stuff our current?
Our sure, I guess our interest has been around thirty thousand is what we got, I think, budgeted in the current, but it's more than that.
He said it's gonna be over four hundred?
For every, for everything. So some of that i- it's gotta be broken down in the other funds, I would think, from where they're coming from.
What he was saying, what he talked to me about before I left was the three hundred or four hundred thousand dollars that we had talked about in here all goes into general basic and stays in general basic. Now, there may be other interest amounts outside of that, but the amount that he was indicating that he told you about all stays in general base.
Well, the money that's in the self-insurance fund though.
That's guys.
That's that's yeah, that's separate.
So that we'll probably have e- extra on top of that, yeah. So our current for twenty-four with from your chart here, seven sixty-five for single.
Oh.
And eighteen eighty-five for family, so we would do a ten percent increase on those numbers.
Which if it's exact amount, it's eight forty-one fifty for single and twenty seventy-three fifty for family.
Yeah.
So what does that do for total contribution? I mean, we got a, we have an expenditure of three and a half million dollars. I'm wondering what the revenue is.
It'll increase that by ten percent.
So right now, twenty-four, we are about two thousand, two point five million for contribution. Ten percent would be two point seven five for salt. So we're planning on again reducing
Your fun, your.
The fund balance by the difference between revenue and expenses.
You gotta reduce your fund by half a million dollars.
That's the plan.
That's.
Well, they said they said that expenses would come down by nine hundred thousand dollars, not by like raising the stop loss to seven five.
Well, right now, we're we're at three hundred fifty thousand dollars is what we've lost this this fiscal year in that fund, so because we had our our revenue is not.
She's saying that the that the expenses are gonna drop by like nine hundred thousand dollars by raising that stop loss.
I, that's, that's funny.
That's her.
But just so, I mean, you guys, you guys are the ones that told me that expense was three and a half million dollars. I just heard that.
That's that's their numbers, their projected numbers, yes.
Right, and also I'm hearing that we are going to be generating revenue in the amount of approximately two point eight million dollars. Is that not correct?
I think it should be a little higher than that.
That's where we're going.
And definitely expenses by about nine hundred thousand.
Going for general.
Well, but our expenses.
This, which is based on. Jack, that's included in that three point five million is the nine hundred thousand.
Yeah, because we we were looking at what, four point six million in their projections, but we haven't.
Four five, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't hit their projections.
Uh, no, we have.
Their projections last year.
I know you don't wanna admit that, but we have in the past. We've had over, over.
Which year are you talking about that we hit their projections?
Two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen.
That we were in.
Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And that's fine. If that's the way you wanna budget, that you're, we're not gonna meet our costs, but I'm gonna make you aware that using their numbers, using your numbers, there is a shortfall. And our projected balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-five then is gonna be a certain dollar amount. Now, I believe it was talked about a few weeks ago that for some reason, if I remember correctly, it was three million dollars is what you wanted in the balance. It's hard to build a balance if you're not gonna fund it.
The.
And the other thing is, I think it's important, very important that this self-funded insurance has saved Cassuth County an awful lot of money. I estimated it seventy-five to eighty percent of what you would have been paying. You've paid seventy-five percent of what you would have been paying if you were just paying a premium on everybody. So I'll just make you aware of that.
Doug, using using their numbers, if we would have stayed with the current plan, we would have had annual costs of four and a half million dollars.
Kyle, last year, you know that I told you that we should be raising our stop loss about the same time of year. And the answer that came out of your mouth was we can't afford to raise a stop loss.
I said it didn't make sense.
Okay, it didn't make sense. Now it does.
To a higher threshold.
Yep, go ahead. That's fine. I'm just, what's been done has been done, but the fact of the matter is, we're on a road with health insurance. We're digging a hole and it's gonna get deeper instead of trying to get out of it, we're not.
All right.
Um, just for clarification, also Doug and I talked last night, um, so when I figured the amounts, I did exactly ten percent. Doug said usually it gets rounded up depending on what the board wants to do. Do you want to round those amounts up or do you wanna leave them exactly ten percent?
Doesn't matter. I mean, rounding it to the next dollar or whatever.
Round it up.
Well, ten percent is eight hundred forty-one dollars and fifty cents for single. And family is two thousand seventy-three dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah.
We usually go to five dollars to make it easy. You guys.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Round them up.
Yeah, so eight forty-five.
Forty-five and twenty seventy-five.
Okay.
My a- my estimate of what you're gonna have for a contribution is two million eight hundred four thousand three hundred forty dollars.
So what do you think the fund balance would be at two point five million?
No. It's gonna be below two.
Closer to two, yeah.
I believe, I gotta put it here. I I don't have the expenditures exactly.
We don't know exactly until the year's over.
Go ahead, you gotta estimate on something.
Right.
Does any, anyone requested this this explanation of benefits and from Michelle?
Yes, she will send it to us.
Will she send it to me?
I would assume she'll send it to all of us, but we'll we'll see when she sends it. She was here for the discussion, so yes.
So getting back to the secondary road department, do you have an amount that for revenue, there's something gonna change, have it out?
We'll have to get the health insurance numbers with the ten percent figure instead of the twenty percent figure and go through it all that way. I I mean, I give you the numbers here right now, but they're not gonna be accurate.
When do you want all this stuff, Tammy?
Today. The Department of Management asked all cities and schools to have all their numbers in by March fifth, which is today, and I can't imagine that the county auditor wouldn't have the same requirements. Legally, it has to be done by the fifteenth, but remember, our mailing has to go out the twentieth, so.
So I I right now have a budget to submit to Tammy for insurance, which we don't have any kind of a, I mean, we got some sort of an estimated thing, but I don't have the exact numbers. Um, I have a budget that needs to be submitted to Tammy. For roads, I don't have all the revenue. Transfer station, I believe I have that. What's going on with planning and zoning? Is the board still putting uh, part-time employee for planning and zoning and all, everything?
That was not removed in our discussions.
Well, then I can pretty much get that, so I guess as soon as you guys have your information.
And let's finish our board meeting so we can get to that work.
Figure out those numbers.
Yeah.
Is there anything you would like from me?
I think we just have to do the math and then we can give you the numbers.
Would you like me to do the math? All I gotta do is go to the office and figure that out.
If you can, that's great.
You can, you can do it all, Kyle, if you would like, or you can ask a department head to do something for you.
Please, please, Kyle.
That'd be great.
Okay.
I already said that.
And that includes dental, is that correct, Tammy?
Yeah, dental and health are together, yes.
Okay, so next up is the secondary road union contract with our changes in budget. I'm guessing a couple of those pieces probably are off the table now, so.
We just have the holiday then.
Um, yeah, and and I did talk to Renee. The changes in health insurance that will make for increasing the deductible is not a um, is a prohibited topic, so the changes we make will apply to the secondary road. Um.
When did you visit with Renee?
I called her on Friday, maybe. I don't remember what day it was. Thursday last week after our meeting about the health insurance and everything that we discussed, I called her to see if that needed to be included or not, and she said, no, it's not.
I mean, two weeks ago.
No.
When I was gone.
I don't remember when I called her.
What was the question that was asked?
The question was asked whether we had to do anything for changes for that union agreement with changing our deductibles for health insurance. She said no. Wednesday last week I called her. So. Does board wanna call her now and have that conversation or?
I will email her. I will include the board of supervisors in the email. I will ask the question. She will reply to all and everybody will get the answer. In an effort to be as transparent and communicate with everybody, I will try to do that.
So you wanna postpone this topic for now or? What are we? If it's just a, just a holiday.
What are you, what are you, what's the goal here? I mean, can you communicate, can you communicate to me what what is going on, please?
My understanding, we're just amending the contract due to the holiday change.
Okay, I had visited with Renee back in January and I put it on the board's agenda for January about adding the twenty twenty-four Christmas holiday, Christmas Eve holiday to the secondary road collective marketing agreement. I had a resolution prepared. But that was not good enough for some reason. The board then started going out and getting all sorts of trying to do a bunch of other things. Now, are we just going back to the Christmas holiday? Cause I know how to take care of that. If you trust me.
That is my understanding.
Would you like me to put the add Christmas holiday agenda item on for next week?
With the resolution?
I would appreciate it.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, is there anything for construction in the right of way?
Yeah. We have one request for working the road right away. It's from Interstate Power and Light. Um, there is a cell phone tower that's being constructed in section six of Fenton Township, and they are running a a power line to that uh, that project. Uh, it would be in the right of way of three hundred thirtieth street. They'd be putting it in overhead. I would recommend that the board would approve.
I would move to approve the utility.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion or the permit? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried, unanimous.
Who made that motion?
Roger did.
And who seconded?
I did.
Thank you. I had it back, I thought, for some reason Josh, I thought it was.
Josh seconded it, okay.
Yeah, I seconded it, yes.
Nope, he did.
Okay. If you can sign right there, please.
Prices you put in, these prices, pardon the culverts?
Yeah, the driveway, just to let you know, we adjusted those for this year's amount of heat prices that we paid or that we charged for when we constructed driveway.
Normally, we don't put anything smaller than eighteen in the driveway, or do we?
No, we do not, eighteen. Otherwise, it silts in and.
Right.
So, yes.
You had other prices in there, I was just curious.
Right.
Thank you, Doug.
Yeah, that's, just for your, just so you have that for reference.
Does truckload and all of those prices, they change any?
Yeah, fill material actually in twenty-twenty-three, for example. First of all, the way we determine fill material, gravel, and roadstone, we, we have, in fiscal years, we have a requirement for day labor to use equipment rental rates. So we use the equipment rental rates that are given to us from the Department of Transportation, and then we use current prices on, on gravel, roadstone, different things like that. But fill material, truckload is going up from seventy-eight to ninety-seven. Truckload in a pup is ninety-one dollars to a hundred and eleven, and a semi truckload is a hundred and six to a hundred and twenty-nine. Gravel is going up from ninety-nine to a hundred and twenty. Truckload in a pup is going from one twenty-seven to one fifty-one, and a semi truckload is going from one forty-four to one seventy. In roadstone, a truckload's going from two hundred seventy-eight to three hundred seventy. Truckload in a pup from three hundred sixty-three to four hundred eighty-nine, and a semi truckload is five hundred, is going from four twelve to five hundred fifty-one. Culverts is all based on the last invoices we've had on culverts, so we put that in there.
And your truckloads, it doesn't matter where it's at in accounting?
No, it does not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tony.
And just to let everybody know, last week, I think it was Metzger, there was a crossing. They are talking about starting that one of these days. So we have been notified by Roy that he wants to start that one. That is all.
Your prices are very competitive. You give, you give the farmer a really good deal.
Okay, good.
Better than I would.
We've got some discussion.
Yep, anything for discussion.
Temporary intersection modifications, Golden Plains Wind Farm up by Lakota, they have some voids that they need to change out. And they have contacted us with some locations for temporary intersection modifications, and they are starting to do that one right now. I'm working on a DOT budgeted program. Due to the new rules, House File, actually, the DOT budgeted program is approved prior to the county budgeted program. It always used to be the county budgeted program and then the DOT budgeted program. I will be bringing some information to the board here in the next couple of weeks, but we'll get that approved here probably the end of March. House File seven eighteen, I sent an email and I copied it to the board, but I have not received any kind of a reply about the email I sent about a month ago. I do not know if there's any kind of work being done to try to rectify that problem. I know there are other counties. I believe it's eleven or twelve that right now are facing some of the same challenges that Cassoue County has. Woodbury County engineer, and I believe I said this about a couple of weeks ago, he had a Woodbury County is thinking about hiring a lobbyist, and they were wondering if other counties would join in on the costs of the lobbyist. I asked him, Mark Nara is his name, to have their board contact boards. Has any, have you guys received any kind of contact from Woodbury County?
No.
No.
We personally, we have to ISAC to handle that. We don't have the money to, to serve.
That, that's fine, I just, I asked.
And we
Mike is just playing.
We do have two for ISAC, so.
Lobbyist?
Yep, if you're involved there and work through the process, I mean, that's what juvenile detention stuff, we've
I don't know if ISAC is even on board with this and how it affects secondary roads right now, to be honest with you. And the biggest thing is that there are there are minimums that secondary roads is required to meet based on valuations. And as valuations go up, the amount of dollars that can be increased is limited. And I think all county engineers right now are a little bit concerned about that, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anyone included it in a proposal with ISAC this last cycle for legislative priorities, because I don't know that anyone fully knew how it was going to impact us, so I would anticipate that'd be something this next year, but all of us can be involved in bringing that issue to the table.
The bridge on P sixty-four, we had pre-construction conference with Graves Construction, and they are planning to begin next Monday. That would be on the west line of thirty-three of Buffalo Township. The bridge down by George Gunter's, merriments are gonna start on March eleventh with that. Our letting for the hot mix asphalt work is March nineteenth. We interviewed some people for open positions and doing some background checks. I'm looking at some requests for quotes on motor graders. Working on that road with the Helder for, for road vacations. And getting an annual meeting for Cassoue Waste Management.
Was this set for April yet or?
I believe that's going to work. I've got to put my replies all together, but it does appear that that's going to work.
Sounds good. Anything else for Doug?
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
See you later.
We're gonna have a five minute break.
Yeah, yeah, you can take a break all day and get set up here, so. Dan, we're ready for you if you wanna
Alright.
Get set up. We'll take a quick break and.
You got something you wanna project or?
Um, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I've just presented this.
We should have it all in our folder.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't know if you had maps or anything like that.
Thanks for offering, though. I mean, I guess I can pull up a map, too, that's.
I mean, that's up to you if you want to.
Never hurts anything.
Yep. There you go.
Just perfectly above the chairs.
Alright, it's almost like it was planned that way, although it probably wasn't.
Let's see here.
Hey, morning, Andy, how are you? Oh, pretty good. Just having a break here in our meeting this morning. I've got a request that Martin sent me from, from Mike Von Seder there, cause you farm that now, don't you? Oh, and that was back in November, and I, we never got a contractor assigned to that. Did I ever talk to you about that, or was that something that? Okay, I, okay, I just couldn't remember before. I didn't know if there was a reason that nothing got assigned to it or, or. Sure. Okay, sounds good. Well, I'll get it taken care of then.
He's a full advantage of that brake.
Oh.
I just need a little more water.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh. Okay, that's just sure, just south of where your dad is. Okay, yep. Oh, okay, okay. Okay.
It's the one.
Well, um, being it's most of the road, yeah, they, they might be able to do that, so I'll see if they can do that. Okay. Oh.
That was a drive up, Dan.
Okay.
Pretty good, even got in early enough to stop the rest of the day like that.
Ooh, there you go.
Sure, yep. Okay, well, sounds good.
I think half the town was in there, too.
Okay, you got that taken care of.
That was busy.
Good enough. You bet, thanks, Andy. Bye.
So is it gonna get done finally?
I think so.
Really?
Yep. That's what we're targeting anyways. It's been an uphill battle for the last ten years, it is. It's not over yet, but.
Well, Minnesota could ever pick up their mind.
Uh, they, they were, I mean, they were pretty decent to work with once we got them involved in conversations, well.
Well, they've always been objective, they just didn't wanna pay for it. That's been their problem, yeah.
They, they were they were fairly upset that they weren't communicated with most of the way through. That was, that was probably one of the biggest issues they had. They, they were always blamed for stuff, and they didn't even know what was going on.
Yep, I think we had trouble getting hold of them from the start.
Yeah.
But once we got hold of them, they're happy to talk to us.
Yeah. I think we're in a lot better position now, plus we got the Iowa lands all served with tile on Iowa side, so anything in the future is gonna be easy. If Minnesota doesn't wanna participate, their howl stays the same, the way they belong. Simple. Morning, Mark.
Good morning.
Great. Well, we are up to the reclassification report for D sixty sub one. There's two copies for you, Mark.
Oh, I, I thought they were two different.
Dan, I'll turn it over to you anywhere you wanna start.
Well, good morning. This is probably the easier of the hearings to have coming up for DD sixty sub one. This is just turning in the reclassification advantages report. So this is how we propose to split out costs for DD sixty sub one. As you guys know, this project's been going on for quite some time, and we're in the final stretch. So today is submitting our reclassification, and again, that's how we split out costs. You, you have also received the final pay estimate, and then the other packet that you have there is damages that we propose for the project. So, so this is just a simple submittal, and then also would like to pick at me to have the completion hearing, the reclassification hearing, and the annexation hearing. So how these different documents pertain, the spiral bound report covers the annexation and reclassification, that'll be one hearing. And then the damages there pertain to the completion hearing, that'll be a separate one, but we can have those back to back on the same day. A lot of, a lot of groups prefer to have it that way. So as far as the damages go, there's, there's a few different ways of going about that, and let's talk on the damages first, but typically for projects done in Cassoue County, we just lean on the engineer to put together their best thought of what the damages are, and that's what we pay out, unless there's something that pops up at the completion hearing. By Iowa code, that's technically on the landowners to submit in writing before, before or up to the end of the completion hearing to get any damages, so you guys have been very generous here in Cassoue County in just having an engineer go through that and try to become pansy with everything. So, again, that's, that's my best proposal. I went over that with the commission. And by the way, commissioners have looked over all of this, Ken Leventhal, Roy Rosenmeyer, both very experienced commissioners. They've worked with Brad Johnson. So they have, they did a good thorough job, and they had a lot to say. But I think this will be our best, best thing we can come up with. Anyways, so, so that's our damages claims. And then the spiral bound report gets into the reclassification. Now, this reclassification is gonna be more in-depth than a lot that you'll see, particularly again, because you're going into Minnesota. So just to give a quick recap of, of this project, you can see here the Iowa-Minnesota border. The majority of this project affects Minnesota, or affects Iowa, but there is some land in Minnesota. In the past, we've had no ability to, to assess the landowners in Minnesota, even though they benefit from the drainage.
We still don't have the ability to assess them?
Yes, we have a private agreement worked out with them where they will pay for the construction, a certain dollar for it. And then also, they will contribute to maintenance in the future. Now, as part of that agreement, we worked out a few different things. One, and I'll preface this with how this district was set up to begin with. Originally, when this district was constructed, it looked something like this, where all drainage would flow through this blue line over to, there's a creek right here, the DD sixty. Uh, there's a creek right here, the DD sixty, DD sixty ditch, DD sixty and DD sixty's subject drainage district one. Uh, lateral two was only this long, and it flowed to the south, and then the Minnesota lateral would go up into Minnesota and back to Iowa. What we've done in constructing this is we have reconstructed the Minnesota lateral up past the road crossing, and then ended it there. Then redirected the drainage here to the south, so that it all goes this way. That way, no water from Iowa has to go up into Minnesota and back, that gives us full control over the outlet. Now, uh, the Minnesota land, landowner has agreed to pay for the improvements in Iowa. And considering the fact that the district doesn't have to pay for this yellow line, which is a, which would have been just a huge cost. They're asking to receive the difference in construction costs as a discount on their total bill. And so that's what we're gonna try and do. Um, so, if you look at your report, there's two different classification schedules. One is for construction, and the other is for maintenance after construction. So when we go to have everybody pay for the construction, they'll pay a certain dollar figure, and then in the future, it'll be, it'll be set up a little differently. So the construction one is assessed as if the district was put back the original way. Um, and then in the future, we'll assess it the way the tile is actually placed. So that means that the dollar figures that you see for the construction are projected based on as if we were to build the tile all the way through here. Does that make sense? Um, and then, and then again, we simply deduct the, the cost savings that we would, that we saw when we constructed it the way we did, uh, from the Minnesota landowners' bill. Um. And that, and that's why you see the two different classification schedules. In some cases, uh, like for the lateral three, the construction and the maintenance schedule are the exact same, they don't change. Same thing with the main, it's, it would have been the same regardless of which direction it went, but uh lateral one, lateral two, and the Minnesota lateral change. Um, any questions from here? I mean, that's, that's kind of the, the long and the short of it.
Just uh to clarify with your map there, lateral two does not cross into Minnesota. It does not cross the road.
That's correct, it, it is on the south side of the road.
Yep, just, cuz those, uh, they come right there on the border, but it doesn't cross, that's, that'd be the difference between. The Minnesota lateral on the east side, that crosses the road and stops, lateral two comes up to the road.
Yeah.
And stops before it crosses.
Very good point.
So now that's gonna be called Minnesota Lateral?
No.
This one will be.
That one is.
Yeah, the red and the yellow.
But with that private agreement, that yellow section is in essence abandoned, so that is Johansson's private tile now. We don't have that responsibility anymore.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Less to maintain, how often do you get that benefit?
And, and the separation of the border with the road now, so. And all the Iowa side is served by tile on Iowa ground, so we have, we have full control over that with our authority under the code. A lot of, a lot of years in the making to get to this point.
Yeah, yep, but I think that we've got, we've got some definitive win-wins going on for everybody involved.
Oh.
One thing you'll see with the completion hearing, I'm sure this will pop up, is the construction costs did run high on this one. The main, the really super soil was like this, so we had to use a lot of rock. Um, and, and the soils were so bad that, boy, you hadn't even gotten with the concrete option, we would have had to use quite a bit of rock as well, it was, it was just garbage. So, um, fortunately, you know, we went through the two bid letting processes, we're still lower than our first letting, uh, but it was more expensive.
I would say it was probably worse conditions than seventy-five even, and they.
We knew it wasn't gonna be good.
Yeah, yeah, it was really sandy up there. Just, costs are doing the work.
It got pretty expensive, though.
Yeah.
Lot of, a lot of loads of rock.
Now, uh, also included, so in the reclassification schedule, we've got engineering costs, we've got construction costs, and projected damages. Um, I don't have, uh, interest, uh, I don't have, I believe that we did some televising on this, um, which was good, we've had. Particularly for this project, everybody wants to know how it went into place, so I think the televising was probably a worthwhile expense. Like, you know, there was added costs for that as well.
Yeah, we had a couple small things that were found on televising, but nothing major, which was good. And all those were fixed.
As you guys know, the landowners have been particularly interested in this one, so they have good answers to satisfy them, it's very valuable. Can you think of any districts you've ever seen that we've had such a high percentage of participation? There's not very many names on those lists, and a lot of them have come to many of these hearings.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty amazing.
It's not a very big district.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, it's a small, small community there.
I'm glad I didn't own any farm ground with this.
They got a good main now.
Yeah. Yeah. This gotta be one of the most expensive three acres that we've ever done.
Hmm, I don't know about that.
It's getting right up to it.
Pretty expensive.
Alright, well, any further questions for me? Things you'd like to have looked at?
No, I guess everyone good with the damages that were figured?
You end up streetboarding on the open ditch?
Um, that's a good question, I feel like we had to bring it down a little bit.
Yeah.
Just.
It's gotta be right at the bottom, doesn't it?
No, no, there's, there's streetboard there, I wanna say, close to two feet off the top of my head, but I, I mean. There's, there's room there, I'm pretty sure. I don't, I don't know what your engineered numbers are, but.
Well, the one time we looked at it, it was darn near dead while we were, and we were like a sweat from the bottom.
Yeah.
That, that section of the ditch hadn't been cleaned recently either, upstream from there has.
Yeah.
Now, so this is going off the top of my head, but, um, as I remember, we tried to get some in there, but it was so flat that we had to put it pretty low. Also, correct, the ditch has not been cleaned, it's got part of the sloughing in there, it, you know, there's, there's no petitions to clean it up, but I'll do something to look it up. Looked at, yeah, if I, eight years ago, the ditch needed to be cleaned then.
There has been smaller sections, we've done a section here, a section there, so I mean, I'm sure in time we'll get there, but.
Yep.
Um, hasn't been anything recently, this year, last year.
Oh, yeah, yep, that and the other thing is, um, we upsized the outlet pipe considerably.
Did you?
Based on it, yeah, 'cause I'm, uh, trying to remember what size the plastic. We, you know, we, we always put a bigger CMP for the last twenty to forty feet.
So you got to forty-eight inches?
Yeah, yep, so there's, I mean, there's a, there's a big difference in diameter, and I think it had to be two sizes up to be able to fit the, the red, the main pipe inside that CMP.
Cuz we had concrete after that.
Did we?
Yeah, for the, um, low cover, we had there, we had that high strength concrete in the lower section, couple hundred feet.
Yeah, and that was kind of a nice benefit to the roads department, is the original maps had it outletting over here.
Yep.
We dug around and found that it does in fact outlet over here, and it might, it might be that changed over time, I don't know, but we made sure to exonerate the roads for any issues with drainage moving forward.
So you moved it away from the road?
Yeah, yep.
Well, kept it, kept it on the west side, instead of crossing the road.
But it's close to the road, yeah.
It's probably within a hundred feet, two hundred feet. I mean, it's close, but it's well outside the road right away. But yeah, it's, it's up there.
There was an intake into the road right away, for, there's a bridge over here.
Yep.
There's an intake north of the bridge that is connected in.
Yeah.
That's impressive. Finally done. After all my meetings.
After all them meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Dan and I did talk yesterday on a couple things actually, but, um, one pertained to this project with the increasing costs. We'll need to visit with Johansson's about that agreement, see if we can get that dollar amount adjusted at all. With what, what they agreed to and what we agreed to, it does have a specific dollar figure listed, but.
They're basically gracious, so.
Yeah.
What they could have been, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and we, we gave them a good estimate, um, so. We'll, we'll try and have a conversation with them here.
But they just have old tile up there, and they're gonna end up paying.
They, they have access to the brand new main though.
Correct, but I mean, they still get that old tile.
And, and right now, their bill's about ninety thousand.
Correct.
But with what the calculations come out to, it should be closer to one fifteen, one twenty. So, we'll see what kind of conversation we can have with them.
You're, you're saying twenty-one thousand more?
Closer to thirty. And a lot of that's with the rock, I mean, it's just the poor soils that the construction needed the rock.
Well, then your ten dollars an acre on the bottom and.
What do you mean by that?
I mean, spread out, just spread.
Oh.
Dollars over different acres.
Yeah.
We just had to explain all of it.
Well, and it's.
We've had to do a lot of explaining so far, I'll do some more explaining.
Yeah, it's a complicated situation.
Not really, it's just straight man.
Well.
I pay, I pay.
Yeah. Yep.
Yep.
There's nothing fair about drainage.
Yeah.
Well, they, previously, they weren't paying anything, so we got, we got a good step already, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Minnesota law, I don't know if they would have ever had to pay anything for that was never incorporated into the district.
Legally, the private agreement is the only reason they have to pay.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, that's a big step on its own, but. Yeah, we'll still have that conversation. Other than that, anything else you wanna touch on, Dan, or?
That's all I got.
Okay.
Ooh, it's checked out.
Probably sleep settings, since you're not plugged into a charger.
Yeah, probably.
Um. You had.
April sixteenth, will that work okay?
At ten AM, you guys check the schedule on that, works?
Probably. Forty days of notice.
Yep. Do you need separate motions for all that, or just one for setting those hearings all at one time? We probably need them s- we probably need them staggered, but like usually when we do stuff back to back, we do it five minutes apart.
Yeah.
Separate for each hearing.
Clarified in minutes, correct?
Yeah. So we need the reclassification hearing and the completion hearing? Just those two?
Reclassification, annexation, and uh completion.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, so that's something, I, I didn't touch on the annexation, it's shown in the plat, but we're annexing two parcels into this. The homestead, and then some of Ryan Harland, trans.
Yep. Yep.
You need to add the one that's in the report to it.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, acknowledge the report, so.
Ten, is it a tentative acceptance?
Yee, it's, it's acknowledging it, acknowledging it.
Acknowledge it.
Do you want, do you want the reclass and annex hearing first, or completion hearing first? Time wise? I mean, it does make a whole lot different.
Yeah, either, either, I think typically the completion is first.
Okay.
We, we do completion.
Completion first.
Before you annex, because you have to have the completion done before you can annex anything in.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion to acknowledge the reclassification report first.
You don't have to have a motion for that, do you? To acknowledge it, just to set the date and time.
Let the record show it's been acknowledged, is it?
Yeah, we had to accept.
Just acknowledge, yeah.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, we should probably have it.
I think you have to accept the report, you don't acknowledge it, you have to accept it. Oh, well.
So it's on.
The engineer is the one that stands for the report.
Yeah, and then.
Acknowledge it.
Yeah, we acknowledge that.
Acknowledge your report, and he accepts the responsibility, we don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, we approve the report at the hearing.
Yeah, we vote on it there.
Yeah.
But we should still have it in the minutes.
We should do that first.
Yep, so I made a motion for that, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks Roger. Is there any discussion on the report that Dan just presented? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. Okay, got the report done, then reclass, we'll do completion hearing first at ten o'clock on. I'll make a motion to set the completion hearing for April sixteenth at ten AM in our boardroom here. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous, and then we'll do the reclass, I'll make a motion to set the reclassification and annexation hearing. On April sixteenth at ten oh five in the boardroom. Is there a second to that? Roger. You got your notes, Tammy and March? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we've got.
Annexes.
Those are together. Yep. Yep. Yep, reclass and annex are the same hearing, right, Dan?
Yes.
Yep. Yep. Okay, so we've got the report, the completion, and reclass and annexation. Anything you think we're missing, we're good?
Nope.
Yeah. Well, sounds good, appreciate it, and.
Alrighty.
We will see you then.
Yeah.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Alright. There you go, thanks Roger. Okay, and the next thing here is informational meeting for, um, one twenty-nine. See ya, thanks. Uh, we've had communications with Minnesota about setting another informational meeting for Tuesday, March twenty-sixth at two thirty. They, in the Ag Conference Center in Blue Earth. They offered to host this one. And it'd be a lot closer for the landowners that way too, it'd be. Close there, since it's right along the border. Yep, and that's why we have it at two thirty, because that'll be at one o'clock, plus our travel time, we should be able. Yep, and that's why we have it at two thirty, because that'll be at one o'clock, plus our travel time, we should be able to should be able to make it there with some cushion.
It's what day?
The twen- March twenty sixth at two thirty PM. So, any other discussion on that, otherwise? Do you have care connections? Okay, that's just an informational one, so it's not the end of the world, but um, I have to make a motion to set that informational meeting for Drain one twenty nine at Tuesday, March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, at two thirty PM at the Ag Conference Center. Ag Center Conference Room, which is four fifteen South Grove Street, Blue Earth, Minnesota. And that'll be a joint meeting with us in Fairbowl County. Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thanks Roger. Any further discussion or any questions on that? It's in our packet, March, March has it. Yeah, yeah, they'll, we can get that, um. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay? Motion carried unanimous. Yep, there is, there is three options, um, in person, by phone or calling in, and then by Zoom. What time is your meeting?
One thirty.
Okay, do you think it'd be done by then, or even partway through, or it will be longer, probably?
They always seem to go at least three, three thirty.
Well, just thought if.
I don't know, but yeah, I'll, I can always join in if we're done.
Phone or whatever would be an option if you wanted, as you're coming back, but either way, it's. I don't know. Alright. You guys got your notes? Good on all that? And we're up to discussion with our auditor.
I got one more thing on drainage.
Yep, okay.
I was still on DD four, DD eighty with uh, bringing acres into four maybe with Bob Weber.
Yep.
Put it on the agenda for next week so we can talk about it.
And I, I did stop and talk with Tyler um, about that report, he sent me some stuff on Friday, I think, but I haven't had a chance to review it yet, so yeah, we can.
I've got quite a bit, I'd like to.
Yep.
Talk about some options there.
Yep, we can talk about that next week.
Do, so that we can allow him to drain those acres that have no outlet into eighty, there isn't a ton.
So just discussion on that next week?
Yeah, discussion and.
Decision.
Yeah. Well, I think we should have decision on there, because we might, we're gonna have to talk to him and say yay, nay, or whatever is time to do something.
Have you talked with him, is he able to come in next week?
I think we better have some discussion on what we want for him to do before we bring him in.
Okay.
Because otherwise, we're just gonna confuse him sitting there talking about the options.
Okay. Yep, that's fine.
There'll be several things that we're gonna have to discuss.
Yeah, there's a lot of pieces to that conversation, so yeah.
There's gonna be several things we're gonna have to agree on before we discuss it with him.
Okay. That works. Anything else for drainage for Marge right now?
Thanks Marge, I did get your email.
Okay.
On my, um, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna ask Scott if they can take care of it, yeah. Cause it's right next to the road there.
Oh, yeah.
Just inside the ditch, or outside the ditch, I should say.
Okay, perfect. No, I was just reading. Okay, so just a reminder, um, of course you have a conference board meeting at noon and then the Farm Bureau uh, meeting at six thirty tonight, I did forward you the email from Sandy that they are gonna be doing a tour of the jail, so they might not be back there till six thirty, so you know, to wait if the door's locked until they get there, so. But that's tonight, um, next week's agenda. So far, all that we have on there is to approve and sign the ten X software solutions agreement, that's the new. Yeah, election software, um, I did have Todd review that, he went over it, um, and then just talked to me yesterday about one error that he noticed, we had to fix it, they did send us the new contract, and so that's ready to go for Tuesday, so he has reviewed it and um, just wanted to make sure that we knew that there was a paragraph in there that said if we had any requests for public records on it, that we needed to let them know, um, which is, I think, standard, and then now just make the change that he noticed, which they just referenced the wrong section number, um, so they changed that and it's, it looks good. So, once we get that sent to them, then they will order the equipment for us, they have assured us that the equipment will arrive and training will be done prior to the June fourth primary, so that they're, they're not concerned about timing, so we should be good to go with that. Then I got an email from Justin Stats from North Iowa Regional Housing Authority, wanting to know if you guys have found anybody to appoint to that board, also a reminder, Anne Marine had sent me an email also wondering if you have appointed anybody or thought of anybody to appoint for her position on NICO.
Person that I was gonna talk to last week, we couldn't match up schedules and stuff, so I'm hoping to talk to them today or tomorrow. So, I don't know, anyone else got anyone in mind? Keep thinking on it, so, that'll work.
Okay, and then, um, I think Doug did send an email, I haven't had a chance to look at it.
He was just laying out the contributions would be, um, in total dollars that are budgeted for the roads.
Okay, and so I'll wait for him to get me all of his numbers to H T, and then I'll input his numbers in there, including health insurance numbers, we'll get everything done, and then I don't know, I know you have a, a board meeting at noon, do you want to meet again after that, or is your, to look at all those numbers before I publish the next, the tax levy, or what do you? What, what are your thoughts on that?
It'd be nice if we could hear back from Elizabeth or Carrie, but.
I, I probably won't publish until I do hear back from them, but.
Yeah, as, as long as, yeah, I'm, as long as we're good to go there. We're fine if we get the right numbers put together.
Okay, okay. Then I'll wait for that, get that done, I will send you an email with the information, so you guys can look at it quickly. Let me know if you see anything that looks up concern or anything. Go for it.
Sounds good.
And then I think that's all I have.
Alright, um, board discussion, committee reports, Jack, Joey?
I have board health, so just talked about, we've got to have a top exercise of planning. About some grant money, that's being used. Three of us, uh, we're applying to the board for a charter.
Has there been any discussion on, um, opioid?
Greenage and Iocog meeting next Monday. How much else going on?
Josh? Carter?
Uh, I did have a care connections meeting, and another lengthy one there, um, our current, uh, balance in the account is five hundred and forty thousand dolla- five hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty cents. Um, in the past month, we did have twenty-six mobile crisis calls in Cassuth County with three additional cases of mental health stabilization. Next month, we will have Marissa Miller on our agenda, giving the update that she has given to the police department and sheriffs and, and uh, I think Kyle and I were present, was it just you, I think?
Yep.
Which was present there for that, uh, that she had already given locally, um, as far as legislative update, if anybody's interested, um, I do have the whole house file that's being proposed. She did print off and, and Melissa was.
What, that's for the mental health?
House file, yep, twenty-five oh nine for the re-districting or redoing of things, and she did highlight all the different portions that she thought were important.
Twenty-five oh nine.
House file, twenty-five oh nine.
Twenty-five, I thought you said twenty-three.
Yep, so it's an act relating to the transition of behavioral health services from a mental health and disability service system to a behavioral health service system, and the transfer of disability services to the Division of Aging and Disability Services of the Department of Health and Human Services, making appropriations and including effective date provisions. So, and there's four divisions of that bill. Couple highlights would be that the new board, which would be an advisory board, not a governing board of the Behavioral Health District that's being proposed, would be a nine-member board, and there would be three elected officials out of that twenty-two county region, that would sit on that nine-member board, so there would not be a representative from each county on that board, goes from what is being proposed, and how that is selected as far as who, uh, you know, as, as an elected official sits as part of one of those three positions um, is a little unclear at the moment, and how that process is gonna go. Um, but it's advisory anyway, so there will be no elected official that makes any decision on any of the numbers, and they're, they will advise things.
Who's gonna make the decision?
The state.
Yeah.
Health and Human Heart Services.
Health and Human Services, they messed everything up before, so why would they make it right this time?
They, they will make the final say in how every dime of that gets spent.
Well, they've done a terrible job before.
So.
Did you say twenty-two counties in each?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two counties is what is in the region proposed that we would be incorporated into for us, right, for us.
Well, they proposed twenty-four for, for first development, first.
Have the worst availability of mental health beds in the United States, the United States.
Yep.
So, we're gonna make it better or worse?
They're not addressing that problem. Um, so.
Can't get anything lower.
The, uh, Care, our Care Connection CEO, Melissa, and as well as Barry Anderson, our board chairman, uh, from Clay County, he they met with the governor, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and what they got from the governor was that, um, they're, they wanted, instead of enhancing what we already have, they wanted to just make a clean sweep and start over. And resolve some of their legal issues.
I hope they do a good job, I give them.
I, I don't know. But that's kind of a legislative update, it's still in, you know, working through, worth way through the legislature, but it's expected to pass. Otherwise, we did approve, uh, for someone in Cassuth County, they was a person that moved out of the county and was, um, being rehabilitated and needed deposit money for uh, a rental unit, I think down in Iowa City, and so we we did approve to help them out with their rental deposit for that, to, and they're, they're getting reinstated into real life. But other than that, nothing too major at HIPAA security and privacy training and. That's not all I have, we have one this tomorrow.
Alright, and anything else?
Um, no.
Okay. I had I mean, drainage always, but, um, we got lateral sixty-two televised here on Friday. We didn't get all of it, there was, there are some sections where there was a little bit of mud in the bottom, and the camera just would spin out, so it wasn't, wasn't effective to televise, but in general, the pipe looked in pretty good condition. Until we got towards the northeast end of it, where it gets up to the road, there's intakes on both sides of the road ditch. And there was a substantial amount of rocks and dirt that were coming in from those intakes, so we were probably about thirty or forty feet away from the road ditch when the camera got stuck, but you could see it just built up as it got towards the road. It was probably in the neighborhood of a third of the pipe, maybe a little bit less, um. But the biggest issue we found by far was at the road crossing on the hundred and tenth avenue. Um, the rest of the pipe looked in pretty good condition, so there was there were some places where the camera got stuck on private tile connections that were put in too far. And those would be a little bit of a restriction, but not substantial, um, so. I guess, see what happens from there, we need to contact the landowners in the area and see what we're gonna do, but we did get the, um, video completed, so. Thoughts, questions on that? Otherwise, that's probably most of what I have, um, we did have legislative forum here in Albon on Saturday too, though, um. The mental health topic was discussed, and one of the responses was, we actually have enough, which our sheriff Roger Fisher and I, I mean, what we know about the situation, agree with their comments, but the comment was made that we actually have enough beds, it's just when they go to find a placement, the providers will ask whether they've had a history of violence or aggression or whatever. Whatever the situation may be, and of course, that's why they're in the position that they're in, so they say yes. And then they refuse to place them, and.
Right.
I guess, I have a hard time following that when you're getting state and federal funding, I don't know how you can refuse to handle the patients that you're there to handle, but they do, so that's something the state's gonna have to address, because they have the capacity to handle these people, it's just, they're refusing to handle them, so.
Well, it's always been that way, because they're not, they don't have the staff available to handle.
I don't even, I don't even think it's the staffing, it's. Yeah, it's just they're choosing that they don't wanna deal with those certain criteria, i- it, I mean, they've got the facility, they've got the staff, they've got the tools in the toolbox to do the job, and they just say no. They, they pick and choose which ones they want, and someone's gonna have to address that, and it's not in our wheelhouse to do that, but state and federal are the ones funding them.
I don't know if it's the same now, but there was a time when I did mental health, that if they were under the influence of drugs or alcohol, they wouldn't take them. Well, most people would, not most people, several, many people with mental health are. Well, most people would interrupt, not most people, several, many people with mental health are under the influence of some kind of, of.
Hence their mental health issue.
Exactly, so, you know, that, that doesn't help the situation either.
Right. Yeah, so, um, that was one of the topics, the other one, which we did talk on a little earlier with our budget situation, um, Henry's working on getting doesn't know if he'll be able to get it this year, or if he doesn't this year, he'll, he said he would work on a bill for getting law enforcement costs to be allowable under general supplemental, that way we're not limited, so that would, that would alleviate some of the issues that House File seven eighteen is causing for us and other counties.
It doesn't help the road department.
Correct.
You're gonna have to do something at the state level to encourage more dollars coming into rural roads cause we're not gonna be able to keep up with the maintenance that we have with the dollars that we have.
Well, and they'll, I mean, the the language they have in seven eighteen and the current, the previous statutes and stuff where it outlines those maximums, they contradict each other in, in essence, I mean, you have a maximum that you can contribute but with the limits of seven eighteen, that's not actually the maximum that we can contribute, so they're gonna have to do something to line up the language which they're, um, at bare minimum, but that's another topic, I think, we're, we're just starting to see the effects of that, so. And then, yeah, our meeting, the conference board here at twelve. Go from there, any, anything else for discussion here today? Not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Got motions, second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Carter, was it you that made the motion?
Yep. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carried unanimous, ten sixteen. Alright, thank you everyone.